Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter, and good evening to my colleagues on the board. As the hour is now 6:15, I'm calling the Town of Exeter January 9th, 2023 Select Board Meeting to Order. I will introduce the board when we reconvene at this time, though. We will be entering into non-public under RSA 91A32L, providing I get a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rantri Olif.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passed as 5-0. Will be in non-public. Thank you.
Good evening again, and welcome to the January 9th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The Board called the meeting to order at 6:15, at which time we went into non-public to review some tax abatements with council, and we are now ready to begin our regular meeting. First, I'd like to say good evening to my colleagues, respective town staff, those in attendance, those watching at home. I'd like to introduce the Board to my right, Selectwoman Levy Ramtriolif, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
And Selectwoman Nancy Belanger.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
And we have our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, with us, good evening. My name is Nico Papakostandis. And to begin, we'll open up with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come in with public comment to the Board. We do ask if your comment is relative to an agenda item. You wait until that item comes up. I'll pause for a moment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move forward to recognitions. We would like to introduce a very special member of the Police Department. We have Chief Poole in here with us, with several officers. And Chief, I believe you'd like to formally introduce Maple the Comfort Dog to the Town.
Good evening, everyone. So this is Maple, and this is her handler, Detective Bailey Texera. Maple has been in training with Bailey, and we're coming up on about a year. Maple was born in March, so she'll be about a year in March, and then she's going to be coming full-time with Bailey next week. So finally, Bailey will get to take her full-time and bring her to the PD and bring her around town. To date, though, they have been, like I said, training off and on at the kennel where she's housed, and also has been coming to Bailey's house sporadically. But Bailey has been able to bring her to Main Street, first day of school, Lincoln Street, meet a teacher. They had a podcast at the high school. She's been to Phillips Exeter Academy and met the students there and the faculty. So things have been going very great. Fundraising-wise, we just barely began last year with our UFO patch. Those did very well. We're going to continue with those again this year with a different design, and we're going to order more of them, because those sold out. Two hundred patches sold out in fifteen minutes, which was amazing.
And I did that one.
And Phillips Exeter Academy, I want to recognize their help. Their faculty and staff raised a good amount of money to support Maple the Comfort Dog as well, and they'll be cutting a check to the Town for that. So the whole background on this program is so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. We want it fully funded by donations and by support and things like that. So what does a comfort dog do? So Bailey has one of the most difficult jobs at the Police Department. She handles juvenile crimes, sexual assaults, so it's also a comfort to her as well. But she'll use the dog, and she did have to use it on an interview already with a minor. And it helps to break down that barrier, you know, puts the child at ease or puts the victim of trauma at ease when there's a dog there, and Bailey can kind of, you know, do what she has to do to elicit the facts. Everything's asked beforehand, so we don't just show up with the dog at a school or in an interview or anything like that. We want to make sure beforehand that the person is comfortable with having the dog there, or the business is. It belongs to the Town. So all the department heads, all the departments in town, feel free to reach out to us, reach out to Bailey to have the dog come and visit the Town, visit the different departments for anything, really. If, you know, a traumatic event in town and it affects people, we'll offer to bring the dog, and we have had to do that recently. So Bailey is obviously with us. If there's any questions you want to ask specifically to Bailey about her training and the dog and Maple, we can do that.
Any questions or comments?
No, Bailey just looks very proud.
She's a beauty.
Selectwoman Gilman? No, I don't know. I think it's a great, great idea for community comfort.
Good evening again, and welcome to the January 9th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The Board called the meeting to order at 6:15, at which time we went into non-public to review some tax abatements with council, and we are now ready to begin our regular meeting. First, I'd like to say good evening to my colleagues, respective town staff, those in attendance, those watching at home. I'd like to introduce the Board to my right, Select Woman Levy Ramtriolif, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
And Select Woman Nancy Belanger.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
And we have our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, with us, good evening. My name is Nico Papakostandis. And to begin, we'll open up with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come in with public comment to the Board. We do ask if your comment is relative to an agenda item. You wait until that item comes up. I'll pause for a moment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move forward to recognitions. We would like to introduce a very special member of the Police Department. We have Chief Poole in here with us, with several officers. And Chief, I believe you'd like to formally introduce Maple the Comfort Dog to the town.
Good evening, everyone. So this is Maple, and this is her handler, Detective Bailey Texera. Maple has been in training with Bailey, and we're coming up on about a year. Maple was born in March, so she'll be about a year in March, and then she's going to be coming full-time with Bailey next week. So finally Bailey will get to take her full-time and bring her to the PD and bring her around town. To date, though, they have been, like I said, training off and on at the kennel where she's housed, and also has been coming to Bailey's house sporadically. But Bailey has been able to bring her to Main Street, first day of school, Lincoln Street, meet a teacher. They had a podcast at the high school. She's been to Phillips Exeter Academy and met the students there and the faculty. So things have been going very great. Fundraising-wise, we just barely began last year with our UFO patch. Those did very well. We're going to continue with those again this year with a different design, and we're going to order more of them, because those sold out. Two hundred patches sold out in 15 minutes, which was amazing.
I did that one.
And Phillips Exeter Academy, I want to recognize their help. Their faculty and staff raised a good amount of money to support Maple the Comfort Dog as well, and they'll be cutting a check to the town for that. So the whole background on this program is so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. We want it fully funded by donations and by support and things like that. So what does a comfort dog do? So Bailey has one of the most difficult jobs at the Police Department. She handles juvenile crimes, sexual assaults. So it's also a comfort to her as well. But she'll use the dog, and she did have to use it on an interview already with a minor. And it helps to break down that barrier, you know, puts the child at ease or puts the victim of trauma at ease when there's a dog there, and Bailey can kind of, you know, do what she has to do to elicit the facts. Everything's asked beforehand, so we don't just show up with the dog at a school or in an interview or anything like that. We want to make sure beforehand that the person is comfortable with having the dog there, or the business is. It belongs to the town. So all the department heads, all the departments in town, feel free to reach out to us, reach out to Bailey to have the dog come and visit the town, visit the different departments for anything, really. If, you know, a traumatic event in town and it affects people, we'll offer to bring the dog, and we have had to do that recently. So Bailey is obviously with us. If there's any questions you want to ask specifically to Bailey about her training and the dog and Maple, we can do that.
Any questions or comments?
No, Bailey just looks very proud.
She's a beauty.
No, I don't know. I think it's a great, great idea for community comfort. Thanks.
Excellent. Chief, thank you very much, and I think this is just another example of, you know, some of the proactive methods that you've used to provide comfort to those in need while you do your job. And I'd like to thank the detective for, I'm sure this is time-consuming outside of your work time, and you two look very, very comfortable together. So that's nice to see. Maple, welcome to the Town of Exeter, Exeter Police Department. We look forward to working with you for many years.
Yeah. You know, one other thing, though. She's for the community, but I also would like to think that she also is helpful for our police, our fire, when traumatic things happen, to have her around.
Yeah, just when she visits the PD, just, everything just changes. We'll be in the middle of a conversation, you know, a serious conversation, and then here comes the dog, and it just, like, the tension is just, it gets good. So it really was Bailey's idea. She came to me with the thought of it. I said, "Research it. We'll see what it looks like. We'll see if we can make it happen." Russ was super supportive of it, and here we are today.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Detective.
It's so wonderful. I know. I definitely have heard from specific people who have just been so thankful for the dog's presence. So she is. She's very sweet.
Sweet girl, yes.
Sweet girl. It's really great. Thank you.
Now, do you let her sneak up to see Chief Wilking and his group?
My guys want a dog, Mouse.
That's right. That's right. We'll work on a dalmatian.
There used to be one.
And I just wanted to add my thanks, Mr. Chairman, to the progressive nature of the Police Administration, and just being willing and able to hear out these ideas and then follow up on them. I think that, you know, there's a trend there, and it's been great to see, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Well, Maple looks worn out. A long day. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for introducing her to us, and again, thank you for the idea.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Wake up. It's nice to have these fun agenda items every once in a while.
It really is.
Our next topic, our next item on the agenda is the minutes. I do not believe that they are ready. We have not had an opportunity yet to review them, so we'll take that up next Tuesday. We do not have any appointments, so we can jump right into our discussion items. We have another fun topic that's going to be revisited with us. We have with us the Community Power Aggregation Committee back. So without any further ado, invite them up to the podium.
Great. Well, the presentation is there. Good to see you again. We spoke at the last Select Board meeting, and I believe you guys have had a chance to review the packet of materials. I have essentially the same presentation that I provided previously in case there are any questions, but I did want to address a few questions that have come up in subsequent conversations that we've had. So if we can skip forward one slide. There was, there was a question about understanding that the initial rates will be part of a mailer that goes out to every ratepayer that is on Unitile default supply, but what happens as the rates reset every six months? What sort of notification will customers receive? I looked it up, and the answer is that there actually won't be any notification, just the same way that you don't receive notification as the rates change, but you can go and view the rates online. You'll be able to view the rates 30 days in advance on the CPCNH website or through the login that will be administered by Calpine. And that'll also be available on the DOE Supplier Shopping website. That's a website that the New Hampshire Department of Energy puts on that encourages people to switch off of their default supply if they are looking to save money. So there won't be any sort of notice provided, but the information will be available. Then there was also a question about what is the Member Services Agreement? I think it was mentioned in one of the docs, and that is just in Appendix C of the Cost Sharing Agreement. That is the, it's kind of a two-part signature, so you'll sign the Cost Sharing Agreement hopefully today or at the subsequent Select Board meeting. And then that, that Member Services Agreement, that is Appendix C, and just needs to be, it needs to be authorized so that it can be executed ahead of the Risk Management Committee meeting, where we'll actually receive the, you know, final rate that we're going to propose, and it will need to be approved. There was a question about when does the opt-out notification get sent out? It gets sent out at minimum 30 days before the conversion happens. So we're thinking that would be early March if we're targeting an April 2023 Wave 1 launch. And then when does the rate switch? That's, again, we're targeting an April 2023 launch. There was also a question about what the, I might have reversed the order here, but what will the mailer look like? So if you skip forward, actually, one more. So this is an example of a Massachusetts mailer. I cut it into two parts, but what you can see is that there is a clear delineation of what the previous, you know, what the default rate would be and what the new rate would be, as well as some information about if you do not wish to participate, that this is what you must do. And then a little bit of information, also, if you want to opt up to a higher rate, if you're looking for more than just 28 or 33% renewables, if you want to go to 50 or 100. And then lastly, I think there was just a question about the overall timeline, and Cliff kindly put together an updated, I think we have to go back a couple. Cliff kindly put together kind of an update of the timeline that we're looking at here. The important thing to note is that we were looking at a June 30th now Risk Management Committee meeting for CPCNH, where we'll kind of receive the results of the, what, you know, the solicitation when they go out to actually hedge the energy. And then those rates will ultimately be approved at the February 16th CPCNH Board meeting. And that's, you know, after that, we're off to the races. So those were the questions that I had kind of understood and had been posed, but if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. We also have Henry Herndon, who is a representative of CPCNH, on the line, I believe, and happy to answer anything else.
Great, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that Stephanie Marshall from the committee is also online.
Great.
I have two, two things. One, I guess, and this is for us as a town more than anything, maybe we need to find, make sure we have this to communicate to people, to check their rates when, every so often, as a community service, to do that. And a Q and A. We probably want to make sure on our town website that we have a link to the contact information, because I do think that there's going to be a lot of people. I think it's a great opportunity, but I do think we're going to have a lot of rollout questions that are going to happen as the time goes on. So I really appreciate the Q and A paper that I had when I came in tonight, and I believe that's now on our website. Is that correct?
If it's not, it will be. Correct, Mr. Dean?
Yes, on its way.
Because I think this is excellent. This is a one-page document that presumably you put together, and I think it's, I think it answers the major questions, and it's not long. It's easy for people to...
Yeah, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is it for me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Select Woman Gilman?
Oh, I have no questions. There's a whole, CPCNH is putting together a whole package of marketing materials that we can adopt and use to help get that message out. Yeah, good. But no, I think I'm too little attached into the weeds of this, that if I ask a question, none of you will know what I'm talking about.
Select Woman Cowan?
I'm just really excited. I've been in touch with a colleague and friend from Sugar Hill, and she is doing largely what you are doing right now, and just, it's a really exciting development. So I'm glad to join this group of communities.
One quick question. So just so I'm clear, everybody, all residents will automatically be enrolled unless they opt out. Is that correct?
If you already switched yourself off of the default service, so say if you went with a NextEra or some other third-party supplier, you will not be switched. It's only those that are on the default service.
Okay. And that will be communicated to folks through the mail with that card that you showed?
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Dean, history repeats itself, which it does. I mean, I can imagine some curiosity and some confusion from folks who get a postcard in the mail and maybe don't read it. So as a town and as a committee, what can we do to sort of mitigate that?
So one of the things we talked about at our meeting on Friday was setting up a specific space on our website that has, that spells out all of this information and gives people contact information, web addresses, emails, phone numbers to call. And we're going to be in the business for a little while, we think, of just being a referral service, because CPCNH has the backbone administratively to be able to deal with all of the customer service issues that you would expect. But we will also make every effort locally to be a front door for that.
Okay.
I would encourage, so Calpine will staff a call center with folks that are kind of educated on the, you know, a standard answer list, and so directing them that way so that you don't just end up getting flooded with calls at some point. I would encourage that. I'm not sure that they'll be able to speak to any kind of Exeter specifics, but they will be able to kind of answer, here's what CPCNH is, and this is, you know, this is what this means on your bill.
That sounds like a great resource. Mr. Dean, internally, would we delegate somebody to be a contact person within town for folks that contact us here?
We'd like to do that. We're working on who that might be.
Okay, all right. I'd like to hear that one. You've got that recommendation.
Okay.
Now, you need a motion soon.
Yes. I was going to finish up with encouraging a motion to adopt the language in the package.
Okay. For the Board, we have our Public Budget Hearing next Tuesday, which is, would be the last meeting before they need this done. That's always a very busy, long meeting. Are there any objections from anybody on the Board for making a motion this evening? Okay. We do have a rather long motion here that I'll read aloud and entertain someone to move. I would entertain a motion that the Exeter Select Board hereby authorizes the Town Manager to enter into the Cost Sharing Agreement and Member Services Contract for the complete service bundle with the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. With Russell Dean, Town Manager is the authorized officer, and with elections on page 21 of the agreement being yes, and be it further moved that the Exeter Select Board hereby approves the CPCNH's data security and privacy, energy portfolio risk management, rates, and financial reserves policies, and also approves the amendments to the Electric Aggregation Plan for Exeter Community Power as presented in tonight's Select Board Agenda Packet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion, this is 5-0. Thank you all very, very much for the amount of time and work you put in the...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Select Board.
This is exciting.
It's really nice to be in the top, first wave of this going on in the state. So we're in good company. Yeah.
Thank you again. Okay, next, we have the Conservation Commission. I know we have Conservation and Sustainability Planner Kristen Murphy here, as well as, I believe, the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Good evening, everyone. Kristen Murphy, Conservation and Sustainability Planner. I'm just going to, I'm here to really lay the groundwork for what the Conservation Commission members are going to speak about tonight. Your packet contained a double-sided, one-pager. So the purpose of being here tonight is to really provide some context around the land conservation process, how decisions are made in terms of what properties to acquire and how to prioritize them, where we stand in terms of acquisition. So I am here tonight with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, Drew Koff and Trevor Matera, and I believe Trevor is going to kick it off, so I'll queue up that first page that you have in your packet.
Great. Good evening, Trevor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. Thanks so much, Kristen. Trevor Matera, the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and as we get our little one-pager queued up here. So I just wanted to kick you all off with a little bit of context about how these priorities are really set. The Conservation Commission takes our role very seriously in looking at different parcels that come up for opportunity of conservation, as well as knowing really when to look further into a property and when to, you know, give it a pass. One thing I want to make abundantly clear is that at the Conservation Commission, it's really not just a matter of conserving as many acres as possible. It's really what it's not, it's not about. It's not about an arbitrary number of acres, and there's a huge amount of scientific data that goes into actually prioritizing a lot of these based on very regional plans. The most recent plan is based off the 2021 New Hampshire Coastal Conservation Plan authored by the Nature Conservancy, which really takes a lot of those different plans, including the Wildlife Action Plan and previous prioritization plans into account, and whittling them down into very strategic areas that can be conserved. You can see in the top right some of the priorities that are looked at when looking to create a prioritization plan, including many plans that talk about different water resources, including pollutant attenuation, groundwater protection, drinking water protection, as well as different resiliency factors for both ecological as well as social systems. So, you know, either attenuating waves to try to protect infrastructure, or also looking to preserve conduits for things like salt marshes to migrate and such. Again, these are very regional plans, so it's really not just us sitting in a vacuum, but it's us within the Pascataqua region, which contains the 52 communities. At the Budget Subcommittee, I know there was a little bit of confusion about where we stand with all of this. There is that number that gets kicked around, about 32% of Exeter is conserved, which is a very admirable number. Another number that we also look at, and again, going back to the actual prioritization, is in the bottom, the very bottom left there, you can see percent of CFAs, Protected CFAs, standing for Conservation Focus Areas. We're at 48% of that. And on the flip side, if you could just flip to the map, and I know this is probably going to be sideways, sideways for viewers at home. We won't mind if you do one of these. It actually has a very good visual about the areas that they're looking to protect. The Conservation Plan that Nature Conservancy put together, there was a huge amount of overlap, but really, they really narrowed it down to these very, very high priority areas, which is usually where we're looking if an opportunity comes before us to actually conserve something. The very first step, too, is also often very opportunistic, because you have to have a very willing landowner that wants to go through with this, and a lot of that comes down to either a landowner that wants to put their land into conservation, so looks, coming to us to assist with that, or sometimes the opportunity because of mitigation that's required and keeping those dollars of mitigation through development within the town of Exeter themselves. And with that, I'll probably kick it over to Drew to talk about some of the finances.
Good evening, Drew.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Andrew Koff, Conservation Commission Chair. Just following up with Trevor, I think Trevor did a good job at summarizing this. I don't know if you guys have questions about our request for, this is regarding the $50,000 request that we have for our Conservation Fund and some of the discussion that was held about it in the Budget Subcommittee meeting is what caused us to come before you tonight, just to clarify where we stand. And I guess, from my point of view, the conservation that we've added in the last eight years that I've been on the Conservation Commission, the majority of it is in combination with development projects in town. So if we look, look over a lot of those conservation areas that we've obtained recently, whether it's the Gateway Project or Rose Farm... it's the Gateway Project or Rose Farm, even what is it, 40 Effing Road and others, have all had a conservation area associated with them as, you know, part of our planning ordinance. When there is the open, the development style that tends to, we want to cluster the development in one portion of the parcel and have conservation in the back. So part of the money we need for our Conservation Fund is, as Trevor just said, is to be opportunistic. Even if we have a landowner who wants to donate land to us, there's still fees associated with that, whether it's surveying or lawyers or deed research, that all costs money. And so the $50,000 we're asking for is merely just, it's certainly not going to buy us a whole property, but will help us should any project. And we do have some projects. We met with someone last month. There are some potential projects and other partners who would be interested in additional conservation projects. So it is a win-win for the town, we think. It's not development or conservation, it's really both. And the conservation enhances the town in significant ways, like Trevor mentioned. So I think that's all I have. I don't know if there are any, if I missed anything or if there are any other comments or questions. I know you guys have a busy meeting here tonight. I don't want to take up too much of your time.
No, this is important. Any questions or concerns?
Not questions, I just would like to, so I am assigned to the Conservation Commission. This came up in part because of a comment at the budget recommendations level, just, and it was really, my understanding of that question was, as a town, do we want to look at what we have for conservation and where we want to go with it? The town, I, my understanding is we completely support conservation land, or we wouldn't have so much. But we do have an amount of it, and the Urban 3 brought out some of this, so I'm really glad that you guys came tonight, because it gives a broader picture of everything. So I do appreciate that. There were a few comments that I had heard from other people not here, and I just want to make sure, from my perspective, this isn't about conservation or housing. It's really not one or the other. We can do both and do it responsibly. And finally, I see what the Conservation Commission does at least once a month when I can get there and we don't have a meeting or vote. They take this very responsibly. They're great stewards of our land, and I just want to applaud them for the work that they do, because it's pretty remarkable. They're our volunteers, and they do a great job, in my opinion. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Selma Gilman?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you for giving us a reminder, I guess, that a lot of people are under the belief that the Conservation Fund is just for purchasing property, without understanding what goes into that, the deeding and the, what's the guy?
Survey.
Survey. Yeah, and appraisals, and the other things that you think are, you know, small item here, small item there, but they do add up.
Yeah.
And we are gifted, or at least approached, by many property owners where, you know, they say, I'm moving or downsizing, but I don't, I want this preserved before I sell it. So just for, you know, public education or reminder, I'm glad you came here tonight. And oh, I will also say that this map or in this slide, I hope is right on the webpage, because that one really explains the idea of the conservation planning and what the priorities are.
Right, so the priorities are in pink. I think Kristin just made this map, mostly. We can post it. Right, with existing data, obviously.
And the explanation of what, how you came to the focus areas.
Though maybe just one suggestion is to make some of these colors a little bit different, because it's hard, they kind of blend together, the greens a little bit.
Yeah.
It's great, don't get me wrong, I'm just thinking that without a magnifying glass, some of us have a hard time distinguishing.
So I did want to point out, which I think Exeter should be really proud about, a significant portion, and Trevor mentioned the number, I think it's 48% of our priority areas are preserved, which is fantastic. One, it speaks to the science has been consistent all along in terms of the conservation plans we've been following. But if you look at the gold on there, that's our priority agricultural resources, and so those are prime agricultural soils. We have protected almost all of them in Exeter, which I think is fantastic, either through conservation easements or on Hanson Property, Rains Farm and others, or state conservation land like the Connor Farm. But I think it should be celebrated, Exeter has done a lot, but it also does highlight some of the areas where there could be some priority. But a lot of that, you know, has been, I think, mindfully done in terms of pairing it with development.
Could I add just one more thing, is that I've learned being on, assigned to the Conservation Commission is, I've not always understood the limited parking to some of our publicly-owned properties, but the Commission has, and Kristin in particular, has really educated me much more on, it's preserving it too, it's not just access and having that land available. They're very conscientious of making sure that the public access is limited to certain trails, they try to protect the soils, our water sources, but our wetlands too. They do a tremendous job, and they are on Exeter TV, so anybody who wants to learn more about our conservation, come watch their meetings. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Dean, is this, this fund has a balance?
Yes, I have to look at the Finance Director for that, though.
But there is a, there is a?
There is a balance, yes.
Okay.
I think, Kristin, at least in the estimate.
Yeah, so if this were included, we're at 150 right now, but we committed $50,000 for Rains Farm as part of the L-Chip match, so that'll take us down to 100, and then this will bring us back to 150.
So if this passes, this brings us to 150?
Yep.
Are you going to be here for the other, the rest of the budget, or can we talk a little bit about budget while they're here?
We can talk about budget while they're here, but I have one more question.
Okay.
So you, once the Rains Farm obligation is, and this passes, it's 150. Just out of curiosity, is $50,000 enough to do what you need to do?
No, you know, even the project that's in the queue, no, but it'll get us part of the way. We're in the process of getting an appraisal, so we don't have those exact numbers, but I'm pretty sure it's not going to be enough. But we're partnering with a land trust who will help with fundraising, so we're hoping that'll be enough to bring us there.
And I mean, I asked the question not looking to increase the warrant article per se, but obviously, you know, you both, gentlemen, both indicated it's not just purchasing land, it's you've got fees and other things. And I know, Kristin, that you go after every single grant that you can, and that certainly helps, but, you know, just thinking aloud in the future, I mean, if, you know, $50,000's not the number, I mean, what's, you know, we do that when we look at the budget, like, it's nice to keep it low, but what's really practical for your needs? So that's the intent behind my question.
Yeah, I believe a few years ago, our request was 100,000, and then it got dropped down to 50, so we've just kind of held true with that. But as you know, conservation is kind of happenstance, right? You just capitalize on opportunities as they come along, so it's nice to be poised to be able to take action.
Okay. Selma and Belander?
That's exactly, and thank you for bringing up the grants, because I did want to bring that, how Kristin goes after every possible grant. Rains Barn, and I understand that we allotted money from this past March, but we ran into construction costs and things like that. Are we okay with that right now?
Yeah, we're in great shape. So Rains Barn, we're proposing currently to go forward with a modified project scope, which would address all of the structural issues. What it wouldn't do is install an interior staircase connecting the main level to the basement. And there's one other thing that, for whatever reason, I'm blanking on, but it's kind of minor, oh, the, well, not minor, but the fire detection system, which hasn't been there.
Not minor.
Not minor, but it hasn't been there for the life of the barn, so, you know, waiting until we have funds to get that is fine.
Do we have a cost on the stairway?
I think 12,000 was the stairway, and 8,000 or 9,000 for the fire detection system. I might have those numbers transposed. But I did apply for a hometown grant through T-Mobile, and if we get that, which I'm hoping to hear by the end of February, that will fund all of our needs. And we have a contractor who's willing to, he's ready to go, and he's purchased a portion of the materials already, he's moving it on site soon, so we'll see progress no matter where we stand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great. Well, thank you all for coming this evening.
See you tomorrow night.
Wednesday night, I'll be at the drinking water workshop over at the high school.
Oh, good, I can't wait to hear.
Busy week.
Next, we have Renee Allen with an update on your Parker Park project. Good evening, Renee.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Black Heritage Pocket Park proposal for Exeter. I know it's been some time. I've written some notes, it's about five minutes. Okay, so just before COVID hit, there was a committee that had formed to look at creating a small pocket park to honor Exeter's historic Black community. To give some background for those who are just now hearing of this, just after the American Revolution, Exeter had the highest percentage of Blacks in New Hampshire at nearly 5%. To give an example, if this 5% had carried through, there would be about 700 Black Exeter citizens today. About a dozen Black soldiers settled here directly after the Revolutionary War, and their descendants continued to attend school, work, and live here, mostly integrated for about two or three generations. The people lived all over town, but there was a concentration of activity near Swayze Parkway, including an enclave in the Green and Cass Street areas, the Baptist Church, which many attended, was then quite near St. Anthony's Bakery, and there were at least three long-term Black businesses on Water Street, starting from the Water Street bookstore footprint and heading towards Swayze Parkway. In addition, the veterans got their military pensions from inside what is now the American Independence Museum. These factors are why the head of Swayze Parkway has been chosen as a possible centrally-located site for this proposed pocket park. Now, by the time the Civil War drew close, Exeter's Black community was disappearing, until it became purposely disremembered in the early 1900s. The community basically became an urban legend for almost 100 years. Now, bits of information about this had been stored in the Exeter Historical Society, and drawing upon the work of curator Barbara Rimkounis, I set about to bring this story more into the mainstream of local knowledge. At first, I tried to get some others to write about it, but then I just ended up writing myself. So that's the backstory as to how my little series of local mystery books came into being. As many of you know, I have pledged to donate all my profits to tangible evidence that that historic Black community was once here. A couple of years ago now, I came before this Select Board to ask their blessing to form a committee to discuss a pocket park to honor this forgotten community, and a committee of seven was formed. And after much discussion, all on COVID-era Zoom, the committee set about to inform the public about the proposal. We hosted an hour-long Zoom presentation, we set up a faux park for people to walk through during a festival on Swayze Parkway, and we collected their comments. We also presented a park design for the Select Board and heard your comments. We then had a good idea what the public wanted us to do, but had not decided on the exact site, nor the wording of any signage. And then we took a break while the citizens of Exeter decided on a separate but related issue, whether to halfway close Swayze Parkway to vehicles or not. So while we were on break, these things happened. A plaque was placed on the Martin Enterprises Building denoting that it was built and operated by Black entrepreneur John G. Cutler. A small gravestone was placed on an unmarked burial site of single mother Rebecca Walker and her six children. The American Independence Museum posted inclusive placards in the beginning room of their tours, and this spring they will install a large stone step engraved with the name of Private Jude Hall. If you have purchased any of my mystery books, please know that you have had a hand in making some of the above tangible items appear in the Exeter landscape. So continuing on, the Exeter chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution are looking into signage at Jude Hall's memorial stone in the historic Wentworth Street Cemetery. Jude and Rhoda's cabin was potentially located near the Phillips Exeter Academy Trail named the Jude's Pond Loop. The Hall and Paul family trees are now publicly available for download off the Facebook page entitled "The Jude and Rhoda Hall Genealogical Society," and they have drawn national interest. So that's the background. So this brings me to our exciting announcement tonight. We will partner with the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire on this pocket park project. This partnership will highlight our town's history to the region and the nation. Their authentic voice, in partnership with the town, will drive many of the next few decisions, such as the text of any signage. The Black Heritage Trail has committed to our project for the 2024 year. That gives us plenty of time to dovetail our plans into whatever plans the Swayze trustees have in store for the upcoming turnaround on the Parkway and more. In addition, the academy owns a parcel of five or so lots that border the non-riverside of Swayze Parkway. They may also have future plans for that area, and they may, those plans may involve addressing the flooding in their parking lot. Now, the exact site of our proposed pocket park, which will consist of a bench or two and a large stone affixed with the Black Heritage Trail's heavy cast metal plaque, is still under review. There are three locations being considered, all in a row, on the non-riverside of Swayze Parkway. The first being outside the stone-walled entrance of the Parkway on Water Street, where the American flagpole now stands. The second, just behind that wall, on the stretch of grass adjacent to the DTC Lawyer Building, all the way to the chain-link wedge, a fence that cuts off one small grassy area from the next. The third location being just past the chain-link wedge, near the paved Parkway that leads into the parking lot, which floods. Depending on the location and size of the project, we may crowdfund to raise some money to supplement the profits I pledge to donate. To end, I would like to take a moment to thank the local folks who have been a part of this important restoration project so far. It may give you an idea of how much support there is for this proposal. First, the pocket park committee, I would like to thank Barbara Rimkounis, Darrell Brown, Dave Short, Dave Weber, Pat Yosha, Mara Fay, and Emma Stratton of the American Independence Museum, now Jennifer Carr is her replacement, and she has agreed to be on the committee. Next, I would like to thank local genealogists, Dave Kruger and Gail Garda, who did some excellent research for me pro bono and produced the family trees of the Black soldiers, as well as the slave schedule of the founder of the Robinsons Female Seminary. Also, thanks to local archaeologist Hunter Stez, who poked around Jude's Pond on Drinkwater Street, and then registered his findings as an official protected archaeological site. Thanks also to Mark Leighton and Dwayne Staples, who both put up with me. And a heartfelt thanks to each and every person who has purchased one of my small books. The restorative justice projects I have just mentioned are successful because of your support. And lastly, I would like to announce that I do not plan to write any more books, and once this pocket park is done, my part is also done. It has been fun, but I do plan to step back and let regional and national scholars and scholars of color interpret Exeter's more inclusive history, a history that I hope will weave us all closer together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any comments or questions?
I was going to clap. I was, you've done a tremendous job with this, thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And you're not retiring yet?
No.
We won't let you. Thank you. Okay, our last discussion item this evening is continuing conversation on the fiscal year '23 bonds, budget, and warrant articles. We do have our Finance Director, Mr. Corey Stevens, here, as well as the Chair of the Budget Recommendations Committee, Mr. Bob Kelly, for questions. I'll reach out to the board if there's anybody who'd like to start. Thank you. Selectwoman Belanger, did you have anything you wanted to start with?
I can go back to the conversation I started last week. I want to thank the chief of police, our chief from the police department, from the fire department, and Jason, who is here with us tonight. What I brought up last Tuesday, there was a lot of questions and things like that, which I wasn't prepared to answer. Mine was more of a conversation starter. It did that. I think the data that was provided in our packet, and again, left here for us tonight, answered a lot of the questions. The, we brought, there was a memo, and I'll let Molly get into that, because that's her committee she's assigned to from Communications Committee who weighed in. I still support this idea. I personally support not 2,500 to the fire department budget, but the original ask of the 5,000. I understand for budget reasons, it was recommended that it be cut in half. I, I just think that it should be funded at the 5,000 level. I know the fire department cut bits here and there from their budget to support that request, which I appreciate. I always think our departments do an excellent job, department heads, with being conscientious and fiscally responsible with their asks. The data that was provided to us, I think, shows how successful this has been, and I believe will continue to be successful. I think it's a work in progress. Not for the police and fire. I think the police was the, the department was the pilot program, if you will. I think it's been very successful. I would love to see the more interaction from the fire department. I think the, I know I brought up the elephant shelf, but that purpose for that last week was to show, you know, we bring people in, in awareness of things, and not just on the serious level, but allow our community to have a good chuckle here and there. And I think that was a successful thing. We're introducing our firefighters to the community, which they would not necessarily get to see. I think it's an important thing. Somebody came up to me last week and somehow thought that my suggestion on this was to get more people at our meetings. I don't, that wasn't my purpose. I think it's to get the important information out to our public. And I think it's a good investment to continue and expand on.
So let's take this in two parts. We have a, we have a requested amount of, well, the fire department requested $5,000. The Budget Recommendations Committee reduced it to 2,500. At our last meeting, Selectwoman Belanger, we started the conversation with you making an appeal to consider increasing that line item, which does exist in the budget currently, proposed budget.
Yes.
Back up to the 5,000. Police Department currently has $5,000 in their budget, both this year and proposed for next year, solely for this. And then we discussed last week, potentially discussing with Jason, broadening his work to the town. But let's take that in two parts. So we'd start with the actual line item that exists.
Got it.
And we have Selectwoman Cowan here, who attended her Communications Advisory Committee last week. There's a memo written from the committee that she can speak to. And we also have Chief Wilking here if we have any questions. So, Selectwoman Cowan, do you want to speak to this briefly?
Sure. So I think that the thing that is probably most important to bring forward from that meeting is the endorsement of, you know, excellent professional communications help from, from the committee. So they want to be pretty clear about that. And this is not, you know, oh, we shouldn't fund this work. It was more, what does a holistic communications approach look like? And how is this integrated in with the work that we are or are not doing? And, you know, and it was, well, we should have a communications team. And it was like, well, this is a, this is a step that we're, you know, probably not going to take in the short term. So I don't want it to sound like the Communications Advisory Committee was not supportive of the town spending money on communications. It was the opposite. I do think that there is a little bit of concern that this is not baked into some kind of broader discussion or plan that utilizes both, you know, the staff that we currently have and, and is, and is a thoughtful look at all of the different departments and communications needs that we're going to have. So I would say that that was where this recommendation is coming from.
Okay.
Melissa also attended, so if there's anything else that you wanted to add.
Sounds pretty good to me.
Okay.
So the Communications Advisory Committee is recommending the 5,000 for the police department and 2,500 for the fire department?
As is already, you know, they didn't want to touch anything that had been worked on or, or thought through. And also not even, oh, we shouldn't spend more money on communications. That was the opposite. It was, we should spend money on communications, and we should hire somebody who is good. And, you know, there were, that was, that was not the issue that the Communications Advisory Committee had.
So can I ask you, was there any detail on why in this memo that we got, that the fire department, they felt should stay at the 2,500? I completely understand the departments, and I do think we need to get that more in line and understand it better. But I didn't understand the fire department part of it, because that would entail the chief. That would be the chief that oversees that.
I, I think that they didn't want to go back on what the BRC had deliberated on and, and supported. So it was like, we, we, you know, we don't want to step on the toes of the work that has already been done by committees.
I respect that. And I, I really had a tough time with it too. And, but when the town manager reset it at budget to, to recommend cutting that in half, I didn't agree with that. I just, I've been paying attention to what's happening with the fire department. Now, and the police department, when that started, and I just think that this is a good investment for communication purposes for our town. And we've been talking about ways to do it. I think Jason, Jason has done a tremendous job. I think that having the police chief and the fire chief oversee that, I think warrants the 5,000. I think parsing out how much it's, that he's being paid, now that we have that breakdown that I didn't have last week, makes it clear for me. And it's, I want to see something expand for the department heads, but we're not ready for that yet. We need to, we need to get more into the details. So I would, I just would love to be able to do this before we get to deliberative, but I don't know if that's going to be possible. I would love to have some money in the budget, so it's a working concern instead of having to wait a year.
Yeah, I mean, and I do think that, you know, if, if I had it my way, and I didn't have to, you know, be collaborative, I would, I would want to put a pot of money aside, you know, whatever it is about, you know, and then, and then come up with a plan, a communications plan, so that we're not saying, okay, you know, that, this is, without thinking through, okay, well, what does, what do we think, what does DPW need? Like, what is a needs assessment versus we're gonna, we're gonna apply the same things that have been working to specific departments, and then apply it all across? Like, I would, I would rather think, okay, well, you know, this is what, this is what has worked, and I'm not, you know, I mean, I think we know it's worked. The reach has increased, you know, we have more engagements. I would, and I would want to say, okay, well, what are, you know, do we want to start talking about what does driving attendance to meetings look like? What does it mean to increase our, you know, use our communications budget to make sure that we're reaching out over the things that are, you know, that, that we hear the most complaints about? Or maybe that's not the right approach. What, you know, what are our goals here versus we're gonna, we're gonna pay, copy and paste?
Yeah. So, and I see, I know you probably aren't on Facebook. I follow, just to say, and share my art, but get some good stuff out in the world. And I think apartment, the Public Works Department, I think Tricia Allen does a tremendous job. So, but I can see how this interaction would help with the energy committee, sustainability initiatives, things like that. That's where my, my mind goes to. Not necessarily every single department.
Well, yeah, and I agree with that. Like, I think, you know, I think, you know, it would be great to have profiles of everybody done, but I don't know that everybody wants that. Like, that, you know, that's not driving our mission necessarily. So what is our mission? What do we, what are our needs? How do we, how do we work it into our current communications capabilities? How do we tie those things together? And then let that be the driver of, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna expand the budget. So I am, I am not opposed to putting money in, into our budget to say, okay, well, we know we're gonna have, you know, X, Y, or Z communications needs. So like, let's talk about that versus, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna approve, you know, this amount of money for this specific thing, even though we haven't really had a conversation about what are our actual needs? You know, do we think that this is, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's social media for some things, maybe it's a newsletter for some things, maybe it's working with, you know, working with our Exeter TV folks to, to make better content? Like, I don't know, but I, but that's...
I know. And the thing with the Exeter TV interaction part, just where, if the budget passes, that warrant article passes, we're funding them a little bit better than we have. My concern, though, is I want them to get on their feet and hire people. I don't want to be throwing more responsibility on them. I think we need to find a balance of, you know, the communication to get the communications out type of thing. I am not looking to put a lot more work responsibility on Exeter TV, not right now. I'm just not. I personally am not. I want them to get funded first, get some hired help, and, and, you know, go from there. But I think what is being done right now with social media efforts, a balance of getting important information out, but also the more human part of, of our town, introducing to police, the fire, the, you know, talking about the dog, I almost forgot the dog's name, sorry.
Maple.
Mabel.
Maple.
I said maple, and I'm saying mabel. So there I go. I messed it up anyway. Anyway, I just think it's a great balance. What I'm seeing, I find it to be a good balance. It's not just serious stuff.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think it should be, because I think that that doesn't lead to engagement and...
Anyway, thank you. And thank you to the Communications Committee for weighing in.
Chief, did you have any thoughts? No?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I can't resist a microphone. And right off the bat, I just want to say that, from the fire department point of, point of view, we're respectful of the budget process. Russ and I have had a conversation, fully understand where we are this year with the budget. And the fire department had some enormous, enormous increases that we haven't seen in years. And we had this discussion. We met at the BRC level, the same discussions transpired. That being said, I, I respect and I thank Nancy for stepping up and saying, geez, I think we could use more money. I think we could. We found $2,500 in the '22 budget, when we finished the drill cycles through Seabrook and all that, that we hadn't spent, that we anticipated. And I said, geez, we reviewed the police department's successes. Chief Poole and I had a cup of coffee. He outlined everything he had planned on doing, and we thought it made a ton of sense for the fire department. And as I indicated in the memo, when Chief Como, myself, and then Office Manager Ballage, and we're in the office, we'd find time to try to get something out a week. And often, it was reactive, or often it was following an incident. So people already have the ability to see it, hear it, perhaps it even made the news wire, and then here we are posting two or three days later. Having Jason on board, and I can't tell you the amount of times he's preempt, he's prompted us, hey, don't you think it'd be a good idea to get something out on the weather? Or Seabrook just sent something out about the, the brochures people are getting in the mail. Don't throw them away. It's not a piece of junk mail. And this, all good stuff, stuff that, in our day-to-day lives, maybe we should have thought about, but just haven't, I don't use the term, scrolled away enough time to make that happen. A great example of Jason's effectiveness with us was the tragic day of the train accident on Front Street. Chief Poole and I were at the scene. We were managing our crews. There was a high-stress incident, a lot going on. And a quick text to Jason, just saying, could you put out a post, have traffic on Front Street, try to seek alternate routes? And it hit social media almost immediately. And it's something we couldn't do from the scene. I meant, I wasn't going to take the time to do it. But having somebody handle that is invaluable. I love the posts, the most recent post perhaps not, showing that I'm aged and 40 years in the fire service, but it being, it is what it is. But, you know, I think, and again, I'm respectful of the process. We will live with the monies that the town appropriates for the fire department. But now Jason Schreiber and I need to sit down and determine a path forward. What do we do? Do we begin to scale back what we've been used to for the last six months with posts and interactions and things to make the 2,500 work? Do I, on July 1, seek the same thing we did before, look and with a scalpel and try to determine what areas of the budget I could find in extra $500 that we may not need to spend to keep the process going? You all ask good questions. I have the utmost respect for Bob Glowack and Exeter TV. Does a great job with, behind the camera. He's at the fire department. And I think we gotta lean on him pretty heavily over the next two or three months, getting some photos out, some information out. We're not talking electioneering here. We're just talking about informing the public of where we are and where we want to be. And I think Jason has a hand in that. I think our social media presence will have a hand in where are we and where do we want to be. Not get out and vote, but you understand the process. I sat there a few minutes ago, and I listened to the community aggregation people speak about, how are we gonna field the seemingly hundreds of questions, perhaps thousands of questions, when I get a card in the mail, or I find out that my energy suppliers, all of a sudden, this company that I had no idea was happening, because I'm not aware of my surroundings? What better way than the town of Exeter having a social media presence, press greater than they are, instead of thinking they're gonna go to the website, hoping they watch Exeter TV, Facebook posts go out through the town of Exeter, hey, pay attention to this, this is happening. You're gonna be asked if you're okay with this. If you don't want to leave Unitil, please stay with Unitil. But again, it's an opportunity for not just fire police, but the entire town to benefit from a writer that has the ability to write, safe stories, politically correct stories. And I shared with, with Selectwoman Belanger when you were downstairs, the fire department nearly had a faux pas three years ago. When we transitioned from Chief Como to myself, there was a post that hit our website. That was, on the surface, well-intentioned. However, it had very huge political ramifications. That came down very quickly. And we have not seen that since we've entered into
I remember that.
An agreement with a, with a professional writer. So it's keeping us out of trouble, keeping us moving forward. And I think it's, in the end, it's gonna really put the whole town, not just fire and police, but the whole town in a far better position to articulate what we need, where we're going, and who we are. But thank you for entertaining the conversation.
Thank you, Chief Wilking. So the board was given several memos. I won't get into reading them, but obviously Chief Poole and Chief Wilking weighed in with the success that they've had thus far with this program, which started out as a pilot program for the police department. But certainly, if you read the stats that Chief Poole has presented with the number of folks who are, the increased number of folks who are looking at this stuff, I mean, I think that's pretty telling. We, as a board, have been working for years, at least since I've been on the board, of how do we improve communications. We have a communications committee, which have given us some, some really grand ideas. But we have limited resources. As a, as a, you know, small municipal government, we, we don't have the bandwidth budgetarily to have a communications director or communications department. Department. I think you nailed, you hit the nail on the head, Chief, with, you know, some of it is, some of it is feel-good, which is good to see. And then sometimes, when the public needs to be informed of something that's happened seriously, I think, you know, between the Police and Fire, you know, we, we've seen those releases get published quickly. I think that, you know, having an experienced writer, an experienced reporter, an experienced journalist, an experienced PR person is, is to our benefit. And as a Board, we need to look at, you know, what resources we want to expand, or if we even want to expand this past Police and Fire. You know, we keep talking about Facebook, but I know that Jason is able to reach out to other venues other than Facebook, probably already does. I know there are some social media avenues that are very popular, that the federal government at least has banned members of Congress for having that app on their phones, because they're not particularly safe. So, as a public entity, we need to be very careful of that. You know, I know enough about cyber through my day job to be dangerous, but obviously, when we have somebody who does this for a living, that can advise between our IT Department and perhaps a professional PR person, that's to our benefit. But it really comes down to what resources, like you said, Selectwoman Cowan, do we want to put forward? Now, if we decided to move forward with something, whether you want to call it a pilot or a continuation of something that's already worked, unlike hiring somebody, the beauty is if in a year, we feel that it's not, we're not getting the return on investment, we can part ways. It's not, you know, it's not like hiring or creating a position. So, Jason, I know you took your time, took time out of your evening tonight to come and, and sit with us. Do you want to maybe walk through quickly what you, what you're bringing to us already, and maybe quickly what you could bring to the town, outside of just, you know, Facebook keeps being brought up? Certainly, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to...
I mean, um... Yeah, good evening. Thanks for giving me a chance to, to speak. Yeah, when I, when I first proposed this to, this idea to Chief Poole, and it was actually probably a year, I, I, well, let's just back up. So, I was a reporter, for people that don't know, I was a reporter for 27 years here in New Hampshire. Many years, started out the Exeter Newsletter, many years at the Union Leader. And so, I left there in October of 2021, and that's when I started working for the, for Chief Poole. And maybe a year before that, I kind of brought up this idea, geez, maybe we can find a way to boost your social media presence. And, and he was all on board with me, you know, giving it a try. And I think it's gone very well. You know, we have been able to, I mean, our reach, as you've seen in some of the numbers there, is up 600% or so since I started. So, so it's gone very well, and I had a relationship already sort of established when I started. And then, of course, the Fire Department had interest as well, and I, I think it's gone, gone very well. You know, I think I, the hours I spend, it's, it can add up in a week. I mean, I have, you know, I've attended active shooter trainings, hours involved in that. I went on a mountain bike, went out with a couple of firefighters on their first mountain biking experience to sort of train with them on mountain bike rescues. We were gone all morning long. I went and rode on the mountain bikes with them to try to capture them out in the field doing their, doing their job. And I think it's really important for, for the public to see what, you know, what Police and Fire are doing out in the field, and, you know, and tell the stories. What are, what are their stories? I mean, it's, it's more than just, you know, Coffee with a Cop is coming up next week, some, you know, come, come join us. I mean, there's so much that goes on in these departments, and I think that, you know, I've enjoyed having the opportunity to be able to, to share those stories. And as I pointed out in my response, response to some of the questions last week, many of the posts have been picked up as news stories and have been printed in the newspapers, printed in the Exeter Newsletter, printed in the Union Leader, you know, on Channel 9. So, you know, it's been, as we see newspapers, staffs are shrinking, towns really need to look at how they can communicate effectively, and I think that, I think we've been able to do that. I'm, as far as expanding to the rest of the town, I mean, I'm basically giving you an opportunity to hire a professional writer with news experience to do what you want me to do. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what your needs are, and it sounds like that's what you sort of need to figure out as far as expanding to the rest of the town, if that's the route you want to go. But I, you know, I'm certainly willing to, to, to see how we could make that work, if that's something you want to do. As far as the Fire Department funding, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll try to make it work however we can, but I think it's important for you to know the time that does, you know, that I do spend for the, for the money that I'm asking for. You would be hard-pressed to find anyone in, in a PR company who is going to do what I do. I don't sit at home on my phone trying to write posts. I mean, I'm literally in Exeter, running around at the PD, at the Fire Station, trying to find things to keep the content going on a regular basis, because that is how people will remain engaged. They need, they'll know, oh, they'll anticipate that, you know, there's going to be new content on a weekly basis. You can't just post every few weeks. And, you know, and that's the challenge that I think the Departments have, is they, they're busy doing their job. And so, I come in and like, all right, let's, you know, let's, let's see what we can do here. We gotta get some fresh content out there. So, you know, if, if you have questions...
This is exactly the issue that we have with communication in our town. You were providing a service that was not explained in such a way that would represent what the costs were being presented to us. And so, you know, when I receive information that says, we have somebody who's writing some articles for the town, and this is what they're charging, I ask, how does that make sense? If this had been a presentation of, here's what you do, here are the different events that you attend, here's the, the extended period of time in which you, you, you know, are with the Fire Department and the Police Department, we would have had a very different conversation last week than what we did. And so, I appreciate you, you know, going into further detail about what it is exactly that you do, because I think communication is some of our biggest issues. You know, it's, there's assumptions that are made when people say, oh, somebody's doing work for somebody else, or this is what's happening. And then we have a, I don't know what that means. And if I don't know what that means, and I'm sitting here, sitting in the meetings, how does that translate to people who are not in the meetings? And how does that translate elsewhere and elsewhere? And so, I think what I would love to see is a very concrete description of, here are the things that you actually do, here are the Departments that you do it for. And I think that will then allow for us to eventually get the money that is necessary for you to do that, without it being, you know, you're doing a favor to the town versus this is a job that is worth this time and this money, and then the funds are set aside for that specifically.
Well, in my resp, I gave a very lengthy response, which detailed, basically said everything I needed to say, I think.
But I'm, I'm saying, not, not that it's your responsibility, but that's something that the town wants to have as a, as part of, you know, a permanent position in whatever capacity, then we have to also do the work and do that part and say, how does that, how does that actually work for all of the different Departments? How does that work for a handful of Departments? How does that work for certain committees and a couple of, you know, that's our work.
Right, right. Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Jason, are you, are you doing this for any other towns, or do you have any other relationships?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, this is sort of a pilot for you as well?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we didn't, I didn't know what to expect when we started. I mean, I, I went into this thinking I would have several Departments, I mean, several towns who would be interested, focusing mainly on Police at the time. And, and I met with several other towns, and I think it came down to, well, we don't know if, you know, we don't know if we're being able to get the money to be able to do it. Chief Poole was the first one to say, yeah, let's give it a try. And with other commitments I have, I've just kind of focused on Exeter, and I'm very happy, I'm very happy with, with the Police and Fire Departments and, you know, enjoy the relationship we have. But yeah, at this point, it's just Exeter, and I have no plans to...
It's probably a lot of work.
It is.
It's also, I just, it's year to year. So, we can see what works, what isn't working. I, I just, I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate Chief Poole for having this conversation with you. I, I think it's working. No, I, I didn't reach out to everyone. Last week, it was just pulling my notes together and starting a conversation. So, thank you to the two Chiefs and to you for bringing that data. Is it possible to add to our packet, even though the handouts that we had tonight, the email, just so that it's available to the public?
Sure.
Chief Poole and, and that. Thank you.
Can I just mention one other thing that you, you wouldn't be aware, although I think I did mention it in the, in the, my response, but I also have sort of assisted reporters trying to get information from the PD. Just last week, I spent an hour with a reporter who was looking for, the Chief, the Police Chief and Deputy Chief were tied up at a class for a few hours, and there was a reporter on a deadline trying to get some updated information on the Volvo dealership crash. And so, I assisted, and of course, any information I give out is, 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 you know, is vetted and approved. So, but, you know, but I, I kind of have sort of assisted in that role too. And, and that was an hour of time I spent trying to, you know, confirm information we could give him to sort of keep the press relations, you know, and try to work with them and, and keep that relationship, you know, in a, in a good position. So, that's just something else that, you know, you might not realize that, you know, yeah, I'm doing social media posts, but there's also this other aspect to it that has sort of just evolved. And, and I'm fine with that, you know, I'm fine, but just, I felt it was important.
I think that's important to note. And as you said, you know, some of your, some of your posts have been taken by the news, some of the newspapers, as you said, and I know MUR picked up one, you know, because it gets reposted. But, you know, we're at a point now with our, with, you know, our local newspaper. I mean, the last reporter that I know was assigned to us, they're stretched so thin. They're stretched so thin, because they're representing multiple local newspapers, and that individual, you know, would end up calling any of us just to get some background. And, and I know that, you know, obviously, if you're in there doing the work, you're seasoned, you've, you know, you know the community, you've been reporting for decades. I just think it's a, it's a valuable resource. So, I appreciate you coming tonight. I appreciate the memo you wrote for our packet this evening that we reviewed over the weekend.
We know you were here working earlier, so thank you for sticking around after that.
I wanted to point out too, that Jason was at the water trough dedication. That was just done a few weeks back. So, that was something that he did above and beyond outside his normal of Police and Fire.
Jennifer Perry's retirement?
Jennifer Perry's retirement. He was there as well.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
So, Selectwoman Belanger, back to, back to, you know, you started the conversation with the Fire Department Budget Line.
I did. And, so I am working on last week's, because that's where my notes are. To transfer notes from one packet to the next is a bit crazy. So, it, I believe it would still be...
Hold on a second. So, are we done with this conversation, and we're moving on to the next line item, or are you continuing?
No, I'm going back to where we started.
We're doing, yeah. So, it would be on page 13 of 26, under the Fire Department. And it would be line item 55043, Community Relations. And I would move that we put that line item to the original request of $5,000. Do you need any more information than that?
We have a motion to increase the line item 55043 to the requested $5,000 from the 2,500. I will second it for discussion.
I, I'm, I am not opposed. I'm frustrated, is what I am, that we're having the same communication discussion that we've been having for, the Communications Committee started in, what, 2019?
Yeah.
We were having it a couple of years before we even formed that committee. We've had data analysis, we've had, which are now even just two years out of date, because of the way people are using social media. We didn't really address it in the, at all. It was more, the social media aspect, it was all more, how do we get stuff off our website, or how do we get emails out, or an email blast? And we're, so we're talking about this, and we have a resource that's been tested. People are receptive, respective, and, and we're getting, you know, the feedback we're getting is that it's working. We're reaching out to more people, but only for these two things. And I am pleased with that, because like, as Selectwoman Belanger said, we also want to do nice, you know, good stories about something good that happened in town, not just actions that need to be taken. So, I'll, I'll go with this line, if we're doing it one line at a time.
Well, that was, the motion made was for that line item. I second it for discussion.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I really want to have a plan.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just, I, I wish that we had, like, and I, you know, and I, I think it's really hard. I've been on and off the, the Select Board, the persons assigned to the Communications Advisory Committee, they haven't been able to meet for a number of different reasons. I, I happen, I mean, I think I have worked as a communications professional. I think we are under, like, we are undervaluing this. And so, if we had a real, because I am not opposed to spending more money on this, without, you know, making it a position with the town. And I think, I, I just, I think we're, I think we're, and it, and it's not that I want to say, okay, well, we're gonna pay Jason more money, or, or, you know, and, and I, the, I mean, the other thing that I don't understand necessarily is if we, you know, if, if this is the, like, what is our bid responsibility? You know, do we have to do an RFP? And, you know, and I don't, I, I, I don't want to slow down the process of communicating with, with people. And I also want to really say, I understand what it go, you know, what goes into providing good communications. I do, however, think that we need to have a needs, like, what is the discussion? What is the, you know, what are the, like, okay, well, you know, my Department wants $5,000 a year worth of help, resources, support, you know, my Department wants this. And, and maybe it's just, you know, other Departments haven't asked, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna worry about it. And then we're not gonna punish the Departments who do ask, because the other ones haven't. But like, what about Parks and Rec? What about, you know, so, so like, that's, that's where I, I feel a little bit frustrated in a different way with this conversation of like...
Right. So, I agree that we need to vet out the Departments differently. But this is for Fire, and what the, the contract would be is the same as the Fire Department's contract.
The same as the Police.
Police.
I'm sorry.
Right. No, and I, and I understand. And I am not like, it's not that I'm saying, oh, we shouldn't do this. It's not...
I, I guess what I'm asking you is what more are you looking for, what that hasn't already happened with the Police Department's contract?
Well, I just, I want clarity, because are we then going to say, so, Parks and Rec now gets, now, you know, if, if they learn that they, that Fire and Police have asked for 5,000, then like, why don't we just budget $25,000 for this effort? Because...
Well, but that was part of the discussion, right? We've already, we, we want to expand, but we're not sure where yet. That's why we're talking about just the Fire Department budget right now, and not any other Department being involved in it. So, right now, what my motion on the floor is, is just for the Fire Department. We already have the Police Department in there for 5,000. My motion is to add 2,500 back to the Fire Department ask, to make that 5,000. And then, I, if I'm understanding this process that we're in right now, we'll talk about the other part that came out last Tuesday, that Nico had brought to our attention, that he had asked Jason to talk to us, or give him some information back on the possibility of other Departments. It's almost two different conversations, because that came out last week. Right? So, last week, I was talking about Fire and potential adding in the future from my notes. And then it came out that we're, we're looking into potential expansion. But we don't, we're, we're not there yet, because we haven't had that discussion in depth. And it's gonna take discussion. So, right now, it's just the Fire Department.
So, I, I agree with you that there needs to be some sort of an overall plan. And, and, you know, we may not be able to address, you know, anything past Police and Fire in this budget, because we only have one more week. So, I see this as two parts. The first part was, Selectwoman Belanger made a motion on a budget item, Budget Line Item that already exists. item that already exists, and it was more or less to put the request back to where it was before the BRC cut it in half. And, you know, I attended that meeting and it was a pretty long, robust conversation over $2,500.
Right.
So, I agree with you that to maybe move forward, maybe we do have an RFP, maybe we do reach out to see what others do for a community-wide. I have a feeling that not many people are doing what Jason's doing right now, so I think on that second part, Selectwoman Cowan, I think maybe we're out of time for this budget year, but for the motion at hand, it's not adding a budget line item, it's just increasing it to what the request was initially.
No, and I understand that, but I still have like, and, you know, and maybe this is not for, this is not something that I should worry about, but like, why didn't DPW ask for this? Why didn't, why didn't Parks and Rec ask for, you know, like, where's the equity here? And I want to, I want to make sure that we are highlighting the things that we need to highlight as a town versus, okay, you know, this is, this is the thing that's been elevated for all of this time, so let's just go with that. And that's the, that's the place that it's like, I, and it is not, okay, this isn't working, okay, you know, the person that we have doing it isn't qualified, those are not the things that I'm saying. The things that I'm saying are, we have, you know, not been evaluating or we are not in the discussion about what our town needs. That decision has been made for us and that decision is not something that I'm arguing with, it's just like, what is the highest and best use?
And I don't disagree with that. So, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion for the line item 55043, Fire Department Communication, to increase it by $2,500 to $5,000. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to, I'm going to oppose it because, because of, because of all of the reasons that I've highlighted before, not because I do not think it is a good use of money or we shouldn't be paying people well, or the fire department doesn't deserve it.
So, I think, I think, and I think I heard the vote is 4-1, Joanna. Okay. Wishes of the board, I mean, do we want to continue, not tonight, but I mean, or maybe tonight if that's the wishes of the board, but I mean, do we want to continue a conversation with Jason for next year? Do we want to continue a conversation for this year? Do we want to put out some sort of a bid, Mr. Dean? I'm not sure who.
For what, Noah?
So, right, right now, the way we're handling this service is through a sole source procurement, and basically that's what we've done. You've heard tonight that it's sort of a, there's not an active market out there, this is something that has sort of been created, you know, through, the genesis of it is what you've heard tonight, so that's sort of where we are with it today. I don't know that we, if we went out to an RFP or we went somewhere that we'd get necessarily responses for that, so.
I think for the time being, he's kind of got a unique niche with the one town he handles, so.
I would like to, further discussion for the other, I think Department of Public Work does a great job, as I said a few times now, but I would like to see how we, how this goes in the future. I would like to see how we could get initiatives out, information out. I appreciate the stats that were given to us, and we can get those periodically. I think we're still working on a policy, so, yeah. And I think we need to find out how we're going to, if we continue this and expand it, how Jason's work, he falls under the police and fire chiefs, Exeter TV's involvement, how that could get worked out. I think, as I said, if that weren't, if they get more funding, then we need to see what their capabilities are going to be and what their goals are, so, yeah, I think it's definitely worth further discussion. I am not, I'm fine with continuing this for next year. Our form of government is once a year, and I do want to stress one more time that I appreciate the budget committee's conversation about this. It's just something that I think has been successful and I hope will continue to be.
Okay. And any other members of the board have any other line items specifically they wanted to address? I mean, I have one that we was going to wait. Anybody over here? The line item that I had brought up last week for Parks and Rec.
Yeah, the water filling stations?
Yes.
Yes. And that's something we need to discuss and I believe, has it been added in already? So, it is under Parks and Rec already.
Okay.
Now, I got to go to that packet.
That was for the dollar placeholder. Okay, thank you, Corey.
Okay.
Any other discussion over the bonds warrant articles? Okay, now just remind folks that our public budget hearing will be next Tuesday night, 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chair, could I bring up one issue while we're discussing the budget? The assistant town manager and I have been talking along with the finance director, and one of the issues that we've come up with, just because of, I would call it wage issues that are out there in terms of our classification and our compensation plan, is looking at perhaps upping that number, the 40,000 number that's in the current budget. If you remember when the Budget Recommendations Committee talked about this issue, we talked about some different numbers at the time, and there was some discussion about a higher number than what is in the budget, and I just wanted to put it on the table to at least give you a chance to consider it. The number that would be perfectly upfront, the number we were thinking about was $40,000 additional in our.
Eighty total?
So, eighty total, and then $10,000 each in water and sewer. So, a total of 60 additional thousand.
Do you have pages for that, so I can keep my notes going in the right? I just, I just need pages in line, I'm sorry. Budget, the budget process.
So, the wage reclassifications is, that's line item 55371.
Are you on one?
This is page 25 of 26.
Okay, hold on, let me get there. Twenty-five of 26, under payroll and benefits, and what line item number is that again? Okay, so, so tiny, oh my gosh, right now it's 40,000. And what are you recommending?
An additional 40.
And then you said water and sewer, we can do those lines separate because we'd have to, I think.
Right, we would have to create actual wage reclassification line items for water and sewer, which we would do by the time of the hearing next week.
So, your background on this, is this because of what we have coming, the vacancies, and we're having that assessment done?
Yes.
And that won't be ready until, into February?
At a minimum, I think, February, March.
Right, so we couldn't implement that data, obviously, we don't know what that data's going to be either, so we would have a hard time implementing much with the 40.
And we are, we are contemplating, we talked about the concept of, and I don't know how the board feels about this, but we talked about the concept of the 40 additional being ARPA funds, but if that's not, if that doesn't fly, are you?
My personal feeling is that in our, you know, for salary replacement or anything like that, I don't, my personal opinion, and I've said this, I've been consistent with ARPA, I see ARPA being for projects.
Good.
I don't think it should be for bonuses or wage increases or reclassification, I don't think that was the intent, that my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, if this were to pass, should the board take this up, an additional $40,000, what would that do to the budget? Have we worked that up? Increase?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that figure right in front of me, so.
I see Corey typing away fever, so maybe he'll have it soon.
I believe it'll be another 0.4%, but.
I mean, I think it's a reasonable request, given what we've been working on all year, but.
3.1% total, so 0.2, so 0.2% higher.
So, the total budget increase would be 3.1%?
3.1.
I think there's no way we don't do this.
I know.
We have to. I mean, what's the, you know, the board has approved getting the study, what's the point of getting the data if we're not going to have the resources to?
I would agree, and it's a rare, it's, again, it's a, it's a market like we haven't seen, so that's.
Unique situation.
We're dealing, we're dealing with that and it's a, the more of the data that we look at, the more we're figuring out it's a statewide issue, it's not just local taxes.
It's a national issue. What's the budget line item again?
Should be in General Government in 55371.
Is that right, Corey? And that would be an increase, that would be a total budget line item of $80,000?
For the general fund.
General fund.
Yeah, page 25 of 26, it's actually the last page.
And what was the budget line title?
Wage reclassifications.
Yeah. And did you have line items for water and sewer respectively?
We will create those.
Create those, okay. Any other discussion? Bob, did you want to speak? You don't have to. You're good, okay. And if there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion to increase budget line item 55371, wage reclassification in the general fund to a total of $80,000.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Do we have to do something with the 10,000?
He's, he's, he's not prepared for that right now. The water sewer?
We'll bring those back to you.
Next week?
Yes.
All right. Any other budget discussions before we move to regular business? Seeing none, we will move on to regular business. Madam Clerk, we have a solar exemption and several veterans credits.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 61 lot 18 in the amount of $12,500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the solar exemption for MAP 61 lot 3 in the amount of $11,500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 68 lot 6, unit 621, in the amount of $500 for tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes.
The next one is, is the same property with two different claims, I guess, is the word. So, I'm going to put them together if you.
Please.
MAP 71 lot 80, I move to approve MAP 81, MAP 71 lot 88, veteran credit says follows, $250 for half ownership for tax year 2023, $1,000 for disability credits plus half ownership for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Move to approve veterans credit for MAP 30 lot 2 in, for $500 in tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 95 lot 64, unit 371, in the amount of $500 for tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Madam Clerk. As referenced at the beginning of the meeting, when the board reconvened from non-public, the board met with counsel to discuss several abatement requests, I guess, in order to mitigate potential litigation between the town of Exeter and the Riverwoods Company. The board has authorized abatements for the years 2019, 2020, in addition to applying the same assessment in years 2021, 2022, 2023, and the amount, the total amount of In addition, the agreement also stipulates that both parties will continue to agree upon the mechanism upon which the assessment for the property is to be derived through 2024 through 2029. Selectwoman Gilman, did you have a permit or approval you?
Yes, I'm sorry not to have put this on the agenda on its own, but because of the interest in our activity and growing mushrooming interest in getting something done at the town hall as quickly as possible, I have talked about applying for a grant from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and, but it needs to be matched. And so, what I would ask for consideration is to use funds from the town revolving fund, which currently stands at about 14,000, a little over, to do the grant matching, I'm asking for $4,000. The estimate we have for doing this first piece of business, the historical building assessment is 8,750, so what I would move, Mr. Chair, is to approve the use of town hall revolving funds to match, as matching funds for the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance Historic Building Assessment Grant for the town hall, not to exceed 4,750 if the grant is awarded.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you for doing that work. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
I just had a couple of things tonight, one is the drinking water workshop was already mentioned, that's going to be on the 11th this week. We'll be working mainly on budget and warrants, getting ready for the budget hearing next week, and then I'll be meeting with representatives from the Down East on the 12th to talk about their grant program.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, seeing none. Selectboard committee reports, I'll start down this way, Selectwoman Ratrioloff.
We have a meeting, Swayze is meeting on Wednesday, and the Arts and Culture Committee is meeting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
You heard all about my Communications Advisory Committee meeting.
All right, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I have nothing, and I have nothing before we meet again.
meet again.
Okay.
Except that the House has started up, and my committee starts on Wednesday. Seven bills about county law.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good job, stay safe.
Selectwoman Bellanger?
I attended a public meeting on the proposed zoning changes, zoning ordinance change at the high school last Thursday. It was attended by 20 people, good Q and A. I didn't bring an example of them, sorry for that. We do have two public meetings at the Planning Board level, January 12th to January 26th. Mr. Glouacki of Exeter TV asked me to remind people that that is on the Town website, the meetings. Exeter TV was there Thursday night, too. That meeting with the Q and A will be up, he thinks, maybe tomorrow. But there's a map and the ordinance proposed language on the Exeter TV. And tomorrow night, I have conservation. Thursday, I have Planning Board. Friday morning, I have Housing Advisory.
So we'll have a lot of updates Tuesday?
Yeah, sorry, heads up.
Okay. The only meeting I had was Sustainability, which ran concurrently with last week's Select Board meeting, so I don't have an update there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was just thinking, I do actually have an Energy Committee meeting on, on Wednesday, which would be a repeat of tonight, but, along with other things, but it seems that my State Committee is going to be meeting on Wednesdays, and this, the Energy Committee meets on Wednesday afternoons. And I know it's only, it's only once a month, so my attendance may be fine. It's rather unpredictable, so never mind, I'll talk about it if necessary.
What time does the Energy Committee meet?
About 3:30 on Wednesday, third Wednesday.
Maybe we can, if you've got a problem, maybe we can work something out.
Okay.
I am not available, that is.
I know, well, that's the thing.
I can't make it back in time.
No, well, it, it only meets once a month, so the
When's the next one?
Uh, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday? I gotta look in my, well
Well, don't worry about it, I'll, I'll explain to them.
Okay. Moving forward, I'm happy
Yeah.
about if, if we can. Correspondence, we had correspondence from a resident regarding a safety concern for pedestrian safety at Main Street School. We have some correspondence back and forth between this resident Town Office and the Superintendent of Schools. What's absent from our packet, Jay Perkins, Highway Superintendent, reached out to me this afternoon after reading the packet and indicated that he and Paul Vlasic have been working on this for the last couple of months. And I believe Jay has reached out to her, and they are going to include this as part of the intersection study. So he and Paul are actively working on this. And the last piece of correspondence was from the Business and Economic Affairs to Mr. Dean, did we, it was, did we have to take action on this, or no?
Uh, no, this was something that was approved, this is the Epping Road Economic Revitalization Zone.
Yep. Okay, Reviewing Board Calendar, we meet again, of course, next Tuesday for a budget hearing at 7:00 PM, right here in the Novak Room. And then we meet again on Monday, January 30th. And next Tuesday, we can set the schedule between January 30th and the election.
Okay.
So with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A, colon, 32A.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Ratrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Bellanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes, fine, zero, we'll be moving into non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.